Our Hamilton County Commission meeting to order today, February 2nd, 2023. We're going to start with a silent prayer and follow up with our Pledge of Allegiance. And it's really hard for me to put in words better in prayer what has happened as we saw the video, the world saw the video of what happened in Memphis. And so just asked, please, the funeral was, I believe, yesterday. And let's just, please, Tyree Nichols' family, please keep them in prayer, as well as the family in the incident in Wyoming. Amen.
I plead with allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we can stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
I make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
Commissioner Reese.
Yes.
Commissioner Dreehouse.
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas.
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we'll open it up for public comments. Anyone here or on Zoom? Such a packed house today. Anyone on Zoom? No comments on Zoom. I'm going to open it up for comments of the Board of Commission. I will go to the Vice President first.
Thank you, Madam President. Just a couple of things today. One thing, I wanted to announce that through a member of the Commission on Women and Girls, Jill Miller, she is head of BI3, there are grants available for schools in Hamilton County to promote and have World Teen Mental Health Wellness Day events in their schools. The grants are up to $500 per school to plan, create, and lead activities to raise awareness regarding World Teen Mental Wellness Day, which is March 2nd. And so I just want to put that out. We're trying to push this information out to schools, trying to reduce stigma about mental health and also make sure that kids that are in school settings understand where the resources are. We've done a lot of work on mental health as well, but I did want to promote that the deadline is quickly coming upon us because the day is on March 2nd. So any school or any student that's interested in following up on this, please contact our office and we'll connect them with BI3. The other thing that happened, I believe it was yesterday or the day before, the Governor gave his State of the State, and much of what he talked about impacts counties. And so as a member of the CCAO Executive Committee, I got a rundown, I'm sure we all got it, regarding what the Governor's budget means to counties related to indigent defense, jail construction, local government fund, next generation 911. And so I will, I'm going through this information myself. There is some good news in this budget. The local government fund, for one, was increased. It's a pretty small amount, but still, it's heading in the right direction, so that's good news. There's an increase in jail construction funding, and so hopefully, Hamilton County can take advantage of that. So I just wanted to bring that attention to the administration and to the Board. I just received this document today, and so I'll look forward to ongoing conversations about how we access some of the funding that's being made available through the state. And then lastly, I had the opportunity to attend the African American Chamber Annual Meeting. It was very well done. Eric Kearney is the Executive Director, CEO, and he introduced his team, and it was a celebration of the work that the African American Chamber has been doing to promote small businesses in the community. So I was happy to represent the Commission at that event. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Dumas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few things. First of all, I want to thank Human Resources for pulling together the posting on the initiative, Inspire Initiative, and the posting is down. We had about 34 people that applied. It's a part-time position, and so I'll be moving forward on that to try to get that initiative started no later than the 1st of March. So I want to thank Frank and his people. In addition, I was looking for applicants for the TID Transportation Improvement District Committee, and so I did find someone who was interested in doing it, and they are currently filling out an application to be a part of that. And the Board of Revision, there's a young lady who put in way back in October for the Board of Revision. She's been on there before. She had to wait because they were, they needed to post a position because it is a paid position, part-time position also. So we're waiting to assign her to the Board of Revision through my office. No fault of hers, but there was a delay because it had never been posted before, as far as, I don't know, never, but it hadn't been posted before, and so it needed to be posted. She's been, like I said, been on it before. And I just wanted to say, as you were saying, Madam President, about prayer, prayer is always in order. Just our whole nation is too violent, and we just need to be continually on our knees, or however you do it, in prayer to try to stop this violence in our whole United States of America. Last Tuesday, I attended the land bank meeting. Was that last Tuesday, or it was this Tuesday? Yeah, okay, I attended the land bank meeting, and so Port Authority usually facilitates that, and so they are continuing to work to try to acquire more properties, more land, more affordable housing, so certainly was an interesting meeting. I attended a webinar about the Brent Spence, again, the Brent Spence Bridge, and it was more about the aesthetics of the bridge. If anybody's interested in letting them know what color you think the bridge should be, what should be vertical versus horizontal, things like that. There was a lively discussion from the group that was there, lots of people online. And so you need to do that right now because I saw last night, it's moving, the development is moving very quickly. Last night, I was a speaker at the NAMI, National Alliance of Mental Health, Mental Illness, with Ms. Gloria Walker, and I spoke to them about the Commission and what they do and how much money we've given to mental illness, but she had her little agenda, I think. She wanted to know all about the Commissioners I brought. I want to thank Holly for pulling together the monies that we had spent on mental illness. She said, "And why do you have that?" I said, "You wanted to know." "Oh, I got a plan for you." So it was a good group, and they wanted to know about us and what we do, so I thought it was a good meeting. And that was my report, Madam President.
Thank you. Couple of things. I, last week, met with the CEO of the Hamilton County Public Library, and we had a very good meeting, good updates. The library's doing some good work, opening some new facilities, updating some facilities, and looking at ways that we can partner even more with our Board and things that we're doing. They're excited to hear about what we're doing and how they can be a partner, so a better partner. We've been partnering with them, but do even more. So was excited about that meeting. Also, we, all three of us, attended the Emergency Management Meeting, Executive Committee Meeting, and was happy to be sworn in now as one of the co-chairs of that, and excited about the work always that Nick Crossley does and continues to do to make sure that we're prepared. Preparation, they always say, stay ready so you don't have to get ready. And Nick Crossley is working very hard for us to stay ready and be prepared. So one of the things that was brought up at the meeting that I think they're going to also work on, education-wise, when these disasters happen, once the news is gone, the damage is still there for people to have to deal with. And what should they be asking when, before they have a disaster? What should be in your insurance plan? I think a lot of us, you know, you get insurance, but you don't really understand all of the fine print. And so one of the things he said was a major problem, and they're going to work, maybe have a toolkit to help homeowners, renters, to put together, what should you be looking for when you get your insurance plan for a possible disaster if it were to occur? So I think that's important. Also, the 513 Relief Bus stopped out there yesterday at Lincoln Heights Missionary Baptist Church, and it was interesting. I think it's very important. We talk about the economics of the bus, and Johnson Family Services was out there. I think over 100 people got help. I saw there was someone out there that needed help, and Talbot House was our partner, and they were able to help those folks get some type of housing. They were actually out there and came and said, "We have nowhere else to go." And I thought that was just, some of the interactions and the work that our staff is doing through the 513 Relief Bus, the stories that you hear of people needing help has just been remarkable of how they've been able to help them. But the other part that we don't talk as much about, and I think besides just vaccinations, that this bus is also health, a health bus. This bus helps with health. And they were doing free screenings, all the screenings are free, but free screenings, and I learned about this, regarding amputation prevention. I didn't know they had a screening for that, because if you sit around and you might get older, or you're just sitting around, they have tests, they were testing people how to prevent future amputation. And so there were a lot of people there, along with, this is American Heart Association Month, and they were taking blood pressure checks. Obviously, the heart disease is the silent killer, so all of those health components of the bus, helping people, you know, stay alive, I think are critical. So, and it's open to Hamilton County residents. Someone said, "Can I go and get a blood pressure?" "Yes, you can, and it doesn't cost you anything." So if you want to know where the next stop is, I don't have it in front of me, but you could go to 513relief.org. It'll tell you the next stop and what added services, because each stop, we have different types of services that will be available there. So wanted to highlight that. We had an incredible kickoff last week at Corinthian Baptist Church, and I think serviced over a couple hundred people, and also provided over 100 boxes of food with fresh produce, et cetera. So this bus is really out there helping to connect people to all the services that we have voted on, on this Board, so wanted to say that. I wanted to also, I also wanted to say that, as you know, this is Black History Month, and this Commission has been dedicated on a number of initiatives to close the gap, to make sure that no one's left behind, and we have a number of things that we have done. In this month, we will have a recognition and celebration that Commissioner Dumas started when she first got elected for Black History Month, and that will, we'll be getting that date, I think it's in two weeks, we'll get that date. We will also have a couple things during this month. We will also have a Black Business Day here, and during that day, I'm asking the administration to also have a report, our inclusion and equity report, what we're doing as it relates to our disparity study. There are some initiatives that are recommended, and we would, I want to ask my colleagues, looking forward to a resolution, passing some of those initiatives to action. I think all three of us have seen them, but we'd like to pass a Black History Action Resolution during that day. So we're going to have a Black Business Day here. We're going to also highlight black businesses on our website that we have helped a lot, black businesses, and then be, and talk about through our Small Business Office and through our Equity and Inclusion Office, under the direction of Robert Bell. So we'll be doing that. We also will be highlighting, I was told by Bridget, we'll be highlighting some of our employees. We have history makers within our county. We would want those history makers highlighted as well, and they are in a number of departments, and there are a number of people, since our Board has gotten here, that we have moved to diversify qualified folks, and we want to honor them during this Black History Month because we have made some history right here in Hamilton County. We will also, in addition to that, wanted to just say that we have one of the largest, or the largest, equity and inclusion project on the Ohio Banks in the history of Hamilton County. And it sits between both our football NFL stadium and our baseball Major League Stadium. And where it's placed, where slaves came over, I don't know how they got over because they didn't know how to swim, came over from Kentucky, was able to survive, many of them lived on that area. And that area was bucktown around that area, and they were run off of that area because of what they called black laws, and they were moved to the West End. So we have a lot of stories like that, and a comeback was an outdoor, interactive tourism attraction that people from all over the world could come to at no cost, called the Cincinnati Black Music Walk of Fame, is one of the bold steps that, and we have others that we have made as we talk about black history. One of the things I think is important with Black History Month is that we, everything is not just the past. We've got to celebrate the past, we've got to celebrate the present, and we've got to celebrate the future, but the key missing component that's important is that we must take action. So I would just challenge everyone during this month and all months, but if you haven't done it the other months, let's take some action, and this Board has taken action. We had a hearing, or if you will, presentation on Tuesday about the gun range, the environmental injustice that is taking place in our county that is located in Evendale, but affects also not just Evendale, but affects Lincoln Heights, the Village of Lincoln Heights, the Village of Woodlawn, and so many generations of babies, as we stick on this point of Black History Month, so many generations of babies who, we don't know, eardrums have gotten blown out, they've gotten immune to what they've heard. We've had UC Children's Hospital and others do medical studies, and it's an atrocity. Now, none of us who are elected, both at the county or the city, put that gun range, or our chiefs currently today, both the sheriff and the chief, put that gun range there. It was done, I don't know, 70 years ago, I think, Commissioner Dumas, and as you've indicated, Bishop Hilton, your Chief of Staff, he was six years old, maybe, and he's 60 now. And so when people hear, "Why is there urgency? And why would you ruffle any feathers?" And, you know, I understand, I'm going to get some scars, or some people might not be happy, they'll get over it, because I think at the end of the day, the goal is to get this done, as Vice President Dreehouse has indicated. One of the things I think is critical, though, is I have been a proponent of what I call "one set of rules." When you got one set of rules, everybody knows the rules, and we can move forward. And there has been a history that predates us, that when a certain group has something, it moves quicker, if it's corporate and downtown, and then when it's community, or a village, or a small city, or out in the community, or African American, it tends to say, "We got to meet more, we got to look into it, we got to do more." And so I'm saying that let's move at the same speed, and it really at the same speed because it's been, what, 60 years? To get this done, we must have a timeline and a deadline and a completion. When you're in class, they give you a time to complete the test. You just can't, you know, take all the time that you want. So I am aggressive, I don't want to speak for my other two colleagues, but I'll say they're aggressive as well. We're so close. We're so close to getting this thing done. $11 million gap for even just, you know, just to get the basics and everything, as the Administrator said. And so I'm looking everywhere, and I'm putting heat on everybody that I can find that who could put some more money in. This Board put $5 million in, then we came back, put $10 million, $15 million, just trying to get this thing done. And now, we have, and then the city put in $2 million, and the federal government put in $4 million so far. I've asked the Administrator, when we come back, we said 30 days, we want to get an update, and we hope to have a money update, to look at other, any other ways, or how we might ever to move this piece forward. I did talk with the Mayor today, Mayor Afetap Purval from the city. I've got to say what mayor, because we got multiple mayors as we represent. And I was clear, and he said that they had $2 million, and I would definitely want us to work together. We've been working together. Jan Michelle has been leading this charge on behalf of the city as the Vice Mayor. But I also reached out to the Governor. I'm not just reaching out, "Oh, it's just that." No, I'm looking for everybody. This has gone on too long. Everyone says it's bad, everybody said, "We got to do something." We got to do something. And this is Black History Month, and I can't think of a bigger black history thing we could do with the city, the county, the villages, the townships, than announcing that this thing has the money and we're moving forward. That would be big. That would be black history. That would be the right thing to do. This is also a health hazard. It's not just, "Oh, they just want to move." This is a health hazard, and it is a 911. So as the Administrator, within this time period, fortunately, Black History Month only gives us 28 days, but I'd like to, when we come back on the calendar, I'd like for us to look at what way we can move, and hopefully, we can move from just meeting, we know we have to have other meetings, but how do we get to fill in this gap, getting a shovel in the ground, not just any shovel, and getting an agreement that they're going to, that they will move, the Cincinnati Police, the police gun range? So just wanted to put that out there. I was on Willie Cunningham today, and I even asked him, I said, "Willie, help us get to the Governor." He said, "He's making a call to the Governor, see if we can get some gap financing." We have $11 million that is needed. So I reached out to the Governor, he's reaching out to the Governor, everybody, all hands on deck, but we have to do it expeditiously, expeditiously. So I wanted just to highlight that and wanted to put that out there what our position is, and, you know, it might get tough, it might get rocky, but remember, it's not about us, it's about these babies. And when you talk about the babies, I get real, I get real tough on it, because they can't speak for themselves. They can't come down here and march. They deserve to be born and be in a community that they can grow and reach their potential. They didn't ask to be born where they're born. And so if we're going to do anything on this, let's get it done, and I'm going to always be saying that, and not just saying it, I'm going to be working toward it. So that's what's going on that I know from, as it relates to the Cincinnati Police Gun Range, and if it wasn't the Cincinnati Police, we would be having the Health Department out there saying it's a nuisance. So we are working together because none of us created the problem, but we're in a position now to end the problem, and I'm looking for all of us to work together. Lastly, I wanted to say on Tyree Nichols in Memphis, I'm just tired of seeing it. He called out for his mama. And we're calling on Congress to pass the George Floyd Safety Act in Washington so that we can have good police community relations. When I got the news, I did reach out to Sheriff McGuffey, our Sheriff, regarding this issue to get guidance on anything we need to be doing or could be doing, and so we're working and in close contact with her, so I wanted to highlight that as well. That's all I have. I'll ask the Administrator for your comments and any resolutions.
Madam President, no comments if I leave today.
What? What? You're over there writing it down, so I know we got something.
I'm writing it down. I just wanted, I wanted to give Lisa as much time as she possibly needed. Your items here.
I'm, Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
If I could, just make a, ask a question and make a comment about what you had said in your report. As far as the 513 Relief Bus, specifically for me, the housing element, when someone takes an application for housing, who is providing the follow-up, and how long are we waiting for the follow-up? Would it be Director Patton? Who is it? Who would it be?
The Minister.
I'd have to check with Ms. Howard in terms of who our direct point person is on housing and how they're linking that back for housing needs, but I can get that to you right after the meeting today.
That would be great. Thank you.
And if you'd like, also, I know they've only been to two locations, but maybe come in, because I'm concerned about that, too. When they get it, what's, there's supposed to be a team out and a team back following up, and what's the timeline? So maybe we can have them come in and maybe present what that process is. I know they're still trying to get, he could get that information to you quicker, but maybe give them a little, I was trying to give them like 30 days, kind of work out the kinks, and then have them come forward. Would that be okay?
That'll be fair. I was going to say, that'll be fine, but I was, what did I say? That'll be.
That'll be fair.
And just one last thing as it relates to the gun range. I am going to have Bishop Hilton work with Jeff as it relates to funding, because as you were saying, Madam Chair, everyone that we've asked and everyone that you mentioned are governmental entities. And so after that meeting, there was a gentleman that was in our land bank meeting, and he said, "I didn't know this about Lincoln Heights and what was going on," and he said, it really touched him. He said, "He wanted to, like, get out his money out of his pocket and give some money." So I want Bishop to work with Jeff or his administration to look at how we can have individuals that might want to give, how we can have private donors, companies that might want to give, because so far, everyone who's given is a governmental entity. So if there are any nonprofits to say, you know, "This is a good effort," and so I don't know how legally we do that, I know Mike will know, but to have Bishop talk to Jeff about that possibility, and it may happen a little quicker.
Thank you. I also asked Jeff to present us some options as well, so I think, including that, but some other options if we have to, if we have to step even further up to get this done. I just.
Further up? You meant instead of Governor, go to the President? Is that what you're saying?
Well, yeah, we call him up. We'll call him up, no kidding. But just seeing how, just presenting us all our options, you know, we've done things, other, you know, just being creative. Are there some other creative financing tools? Because obviously, you know, we want to get this moving and grooving, and Vice President Dreehouse.
Yeah, I just want to add a little bit of flavor also to the conversation about funding. So we have gone to the federal government. Sherrod Brown has, that $4 million is an earmark from his office. We've also reached out to the U.S. Marshals Office, and I think it's the ATF, because they will be using the facility. So we've got a couple of things in the hopper at the federal government. We had a conversation with the Governor, and I appreciate your outreach as well. The Mayors of Evendale, Woodlawn, and Lincoln Heights were all on the call, asking the Governor to support our efforts. There was a presentation, actually, at that time, it's been a while back. The Governor indicated that he wanted to be helpful, and so we were hopeful that something perhaps in the budget would be reflected in that. But beyond that, we, I agree that the state is a good place to look. We've got a delegation meeting coming up, and I know it's on the list of things to discuss with the delegation. Our state Representative Cindy Abrams and our state Senator Blessing are also supportive of the project and could be helpful when it comes to the state budget and money through the state, and whether it's in the budget or somewhere else. So I did want to make sure that there was a conversation about some of the outreach that has happened. It has happened in the last few months. It wasn't, you know, as recently as yesterday or today, but it has happened. And then the other piece is the private funding. There was a letter that went out to a company that is nearby that would have a great deal of interest, I would think, in moving the gun range, but I love the idea of additional companies that might have some interest on the private side. of additional companies that might have some interest on the private side, um, to help with the effort. So I think that the number we're still trying to hone in on, I think we've heard 31 million for Phase 1, try, still trying to get that down a little bit lower, uh, working with the city to try to compress the number, um, so that it's more manageable, but I also had the idea of, you know, that we've done five, then, then we did 10. Um, while I don't think the county needs to fund this entire project, I, I hear what you're saying about anything more that we can come up with, but in collaboration, um, with the city, with the state, with the federal government, all the, all the local partners that we've been working with. So, uh, more to come. I think we're trying, uh, very hard to figure out what the actual number is so that when the final ask goes to the state, as you say, um, we know exactly what we're asking for. You know, how much money exactly are we asking for? Because in so many cases, I think the state likes to be the last dollar in, um, and so that we're trying to hone in on that number right now. So I appreciate all the efforts of everybody. Um, all three of us have been working on this. We've been, we've been working for a while, and I, and I understand the frustration. It has taken a long time, but there are a lot of moving parts on this one. Um, so hopefully we'll get there within the next few months. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Jeff, you said you had nothing, or you got a lot? So you gotta go back and get the pencils and get the creative finance and go, what'd you need?
I said, we need to find something for him to do, huh?
Yes, you done enough work for him to do. Okay, no, no worries. We're going to the, uh, regular agenda. Yes. We have the, we've got several items from the engineer.
Yes.
Department.
Sorry. Good afternoon, commissioners. Um, I'm Lisa Darger. I am the Budget Director at the Engineer's Office. I am standing in for Engineer Beck. He is at a conference today. So, um, we have four items that are before you today. All of these items are related. Um, they're in relation to project, um, improvements to Fields, Erdel Road, Snyder to Wilkins Boulevard, which is our project number 501715. Um, we do have federal dollars in this project, so we have to follow the federal process when appropriating properties, um, for the construction of this project. Uh, all these parcels are needed for the construction of the project. There was an establishment hearing, uh, that the board held on November 17th of '22 and was approved on the 12th of January this year. Um, so at this time, the appraisals have been conducted, all four of these parcels and their property owners were informed of the fair market value, um, and this is just the next step in the process to get these parcels appropriated for the construction of the project. And this will go through the prosecutor's office. It allows us to take it to them. So for resolution number one, the, uh, dollar value is $16,436. For resolution number two, it's $6,876. Resolution three is $9,000, and resolution four is $6,997. All of these funds will be paid out of Engineers Permissive Auto Tax Fund.
Thank you. Are there any questions, Vice President Drehouse? Mr. Dumas?
No questions.
Questions. Uh, I make a motion to approve items one through four.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, now we go to the consent agenda. I'm gonna ask, uh, Administrator Ludo if he will, uh, walk us through those and highlight the ones that have, uh, financial implications.
Thank you, Madam President. So, uh, item number five on the consent agenda is a budget adjustment. This is a budget adjustment for two grants, uh, $34,000 in adult probation for a grant to assist victims of crime, uh, $237,000 grant, uh, Recovery Ohio Grant for QRT and the process, and quick response team, uh, activities in the prosecutor's office. Uh, item number six is a $98,000 agreement, uh, with Howard Werschbaile and Company. This relates to an operational review, uh, for the zoo for the benefit of the Tax Labor Review Committee as they do their work this year reviewing, uh, that particular item, um, uh, for recommendation to the board. Uh, we have a grant, uh, $24,000 grant, uh, Marine Patrol Assistance Grant, uh, to the Hamilton County Sheriff. Uh, we have a $300,000 agreement, uh, between the sheriff, uh, and Recruitment Strategies LLC for administrative support, public engagement, uh, and strategic program planning. Uh, we have a $417,000 resolution which relates to the establishment of several POs. Um, uh, this is software support over at Juvenile Court, uh, postage at Job and Family Services, uh, and Wi-Fi LAN services over at Job and Family Services. Uh, we have a, uh, cabin chassis replacement, uh, three cabin chassis replacements through the Engineer's Office, uh, at 285,000. Uh, then we also have, uh, some, a credit card, uh, resolution authorizing credit card usage in Common Police Court, uh, and we have the sheriff's report of no objections on a liquor permit application, um, use of credit cards by Veteran Services Commission, and a request for authorization to travel, uh, to Austin, Texas for two employees in the coroner's office.
Uh, thank you. I wanted just to highlight item number six. Uh, it is a, a contract with a company to look at the levy, the zoo levy, is that correct?
That's correct. An operational review of the zoo levy, correct.
And, um, I had some concern, not, not a lot of concern, but I wanna be clear, I wanted to, if I vote on this, I'm not agreeing, because I wanna take a look at, you know, all the levies, and I'm gonna meet with the zoo, and I know they're interested in going up or what have you, but I don't wanna have the TLRCs, you know, these are volunteers are giving up their time. Um, I wanna be clear, I wanna look at what ways can we reduce the tax burden of these homeowners, these property owners, because they're getting killed out here. I mean, I saw a lot of them running in, trying to pay the property taxes. Uh, I was out in Corrine Township yesterday with a small business, and they said, you know, can I pay online? I showed them how to go online, and they said, well, can I, you know, I, I, I can't pay it all right now. How did, you know, what kinda, and I know that our treasurer's doing a good job, but we've gotta keep our, you know, it's hard sometimes because people say, well, I need a levy, and then you see all this development going on. It's kinda like, how are you buying up Avondale if you say that you're broke? And while we definitely, our zoo is number one, in my opinion, in the world, uh, but we wanna make sure, you know, we wanna make sure the, uh, they have a home, but we also not at the expense of somebody losing their home. So I just wanna make sure that if I vote on this, I'm not saying I'm for an increase or I'm for the continuation. Just allow me to be able to at least meet with the zoo and hear them out and show us what we're doing. But I do have a question, it's not my question, it's Avondale, a lot of people say, how are they exp, every time I look up, it's a bulldozer out here, and then you keep going up on my property taxes. And then, you know, you can't be broke if you got development going on. So I just wanna make sure that, that if I vote for this, I'm not.
Yeah.
Saying that, um, because I don't think they did anything wrong with the money or anything like that.
Sure, sure. Correct, Madam President. Yeah, so this, and this, through this resolution, all you're doing is, um, um, indicating the, the, the need for an operational review to help the Tax Labor Review Committee do its work. You're not positioning yourself one way or the other on a future vote, uh, or anything like that. And in fact, just anecdotally, uh, we've had commissions in the past agree with, disagree with recommendations ultimately from the TLRC. So, uh, at this point, all you're saying is in order for the TLRC to do their work, um, it would, uh, an operational review would be helpful to benchmark the activities of the zoo, et cetera, but you're not, you're not positioning yourself on a vote for the levy placement on the ballot or anything like that.
Okay. Yes, because I don't, I mean, I know they're looking to see, did the zoo use the money properly? I'm sure they did. Um, but I would like to see the RFP go beyond that to look at, if you're gonna make a recommendation to the TLRC, who are volunteers putting in so much work, and we're so appreciative of them, but I want them to get the total picture. I would like to add in here all the development that's happening, even though we might not be paying for it, but it, you know, if you're broke, how much of your money is going to development? Are we paying for the operations and then you freeze up your money to do all this development? Because I'm telling you, some homeowners in, in Avondale are not happy that they lost their house, or couldn't afford to keep it, or the taxes were so high that, you know, they were able to get bought out for a little bit of peanuts.
Yeah, so the, the capital and the operational, uh, work of the zoo, I'm sure will be a part of this.
Okay.
And certainly to the degree, and I'll talk with Lisa, to the degree that there's some things we need to, um, put into the scope of work to make sure it provides a full picture, we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you. And like I said, I not, haven't made my decision, I just wanna put those, those are questions that were posed to me, and I look forward to meeting, uh, going out, I, I mean, I go out for fun, but now going out and have a business, uh, uh, understanding of what's happening. So, um, that was my only, uh, question for clarification. Vice President Drehouse, do you?
I have no questions.
Uh, Commissioner Dumas, do you have anything?
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Um, item six was also a, a question that I had. I know that the consultant will, uh, make some decisions or recommendations to the TLRC, uh, as it relates to level of increase, if there needs to be an increase, or if it needs to stay the same. And this is a continued levy that comes up every, uh, five years? That's what I thought. Thank you for the, okay. And number, um, so that was, uh, is this Howard Werschbaile? Is he, is he, I'm wanting to know if he was a new consultant?
And we've used them before for the zoo. Uh, Lisa, how many, how many?
Uh, Howard Werschbaile's Consulting Group, uh, they're out of Cleveland, and they have done the last two zoo reviews as well.
Okay.
They'll be updating, and they did the Senior Services Levy Review in the last cycle as well.
Okay, thank you. And, um, item 10 on the replacement, um, chassis, three of them, um, 2024 replacement chassis, is that, uh, I know they're on a rotational scale, so is that, they normally get that many at once, or?
Uh, I will defer to Ms. Darger on this particular item, since she's here.
Not a problem. Um, so yeah, we typically buy three per year. Um, we'd like to be on a replacement schedule around like a 15-year, but it's more like a 20-year right now.
Oh.
Trying to get there, but yes, we typically buy three every year.
Okay. Thank you so much. Um, and lastly, uh, number 13, um, the Veteran Service Commission, um, Jeff, is this going to be one staff person that's using this credit card or, uh, how many people?
Usually, usually when a purchase of credit card is for the department, so, um, it would, uh, for any of the purposes and the uses allowed by the revised code, uh, for credit card, just like we have one in the administration, most, most departments have one, um, it would be able to be used by staff of the Veteran Services Commission, um, whether that is primarily one person or multiple, I don't know that I can answer that right now, but it could be used, um, on a wider range than just one person.
I, I'm concerned about the 12,000, because this is a small budget Veteran Service Commission is a small budgeted commission, and I'm looking at the credit card amount for big, for larger entities like, uh, 11. Common Please is 31,000, okay? And this is 12,000, but our budget, why is it so high?
Uh, I could follow up on that for you, Commissioner, and I, and there, I don't know whether or not that is the only credit card over at Common Please Court. Sometimes we authorize.
My comments, please, I'm concerned about veterans.
Uh, understood, but you, you'd reference.
Sure.
The, the relative levels.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so, um, I, I can certainly check on that, but when you think about, uh, registrations for, for conferences, training, things of that nature, um, you know, that, that, just knowing from experience, that, that could add up pretty quickly, even for one person. But we can follow up certainly and, 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 uh, find, find out exactly what their purposes are for this particular card.
And is this a repeat? Have they had a card before?
I believe they have, but I'll, but I'll follow up on that.
Okay.
Um, it's, it's pretty standard for departments to have one every year, so, um, uh, I, I would imagine they've had one in the past, but I'll confirm that.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Thank you. And, uh, Jeff, all the Veteran Services Commission, did we make any appointments on there, or how does that work, or is it?
Follow up on the appointment, uh, schedule for, for veterans and, and our appointment status there, Madam President. I can do that right after the meeting for you.
Okay, great. All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve items number five through 14.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Any other comments? No further business, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Commissioner Reese?
Yes.
Commissioner Drehouse?
Yes.
Commissioner Summer Dumas?
Yes.
Okay.